All right, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I kept thinking we were missing somebody, but Councilmember Baker is out of town and won't be here this evening, she's with her family. So I called the meeting to order, I should have done that before I announced that. I did want to mention that today marks the anniversary of the Virginia Tech shooting, which was 12 years ago today, so I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. And we, you know, one of our, Herndon Elementary School, one of our Herndon Elementary School teachers lost her daughter that day at Virginia Tech, so we're keeping her especially close to our hearts today. Next week, we have one presentation, which is to recognize National Small Business and Economic Development Weeks. And that is all we have for next week. And if there's no discussion on that, we will jump right into the public hearings, which is all about the budget. We know the drill by now, the next five items relate to this proposed budget. We have received several comments, they've been entered into the record. I will call for disclosures by council, and then recognize the town manager for his presentations, followed by questions and comments from the council. Do you guys want me to outline the process for next week, or do you want to just hear it next week? I'm guessing you're quite good.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we can remember it.
All right, I'm gonna call on you guys to recite it next week. Here we go. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip like pages of my notes. So we all have disclosures, and for the audience, we do have to read them individually into the record, so bear with us, it's gonna sound like an echo in here. I'll start. For the record, throughout the year, I may be invited as a guest to attend events hosted by various organizations, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have signed and filed the appropriate disclosures with the town clerk and the town attorney. And I'll start with Bill, and go around, is that what for you guys?
Madam Mayor, for the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Madam Mayor, for the record, throughout the year, I may be invited as a guest to attend events hosted by various organizations, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. I'm able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, for the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I'm able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney. Who's next?
Julie, right?
Okay. For the record, Madam Mayor, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I filed the appropriate disclosures with the town clerk and town attorney.
I think that's it, everybody. All right, Mr. Town Manager, hopefully you have something different to say.
I'm not saying any of that.
Okay, good.
Yes, I think that's, I think that's been well covered. Tonight's presentation, we presented the base budget twice to you all, I'll just give you any updates that we have to those discussions. And then we're going to go into discuss donations, we're going to discuss if there's anything else you want to include in this budget, and go through a list of things that you've expressed interest in, and hopefully get to a point where we can write a resolution that meets your needs, and we can present it to you next Tuesday night for adoption. So the first thing is, as I mentioned at the public hearing last week, that we were able to maneuver around and get the police pay adjustment into the base budget by just moving some things around. That will be a sentence or two in the resolution, because it wasn't published on April 1. So we'll already have that included in, in a sentence or two. You also get a sentence, a sentence on an interfund transfer we need to make to the downtown parking fund. Again, this is a housekeeping item that was overlooked when we were balancing everything, and we missed that thing, so there'll be a line in for that as well. As we talk about the donations, those will be lines in that base resolution as well, as well as anything else that you add into it. If you do anything to move the real, or, I'm sorry, the meals tax rate from 1% up, we will then have to adjust the meals tax rate resolution. Now, or, now that being said, you, we have advertised 1.5%, just to give some latitude for these conversations here tonight, and not to, not to restrict you on what you're able to do. So those are the updates from the past two presentations that we've done. So tonight, we'll be looking for, trying to get to some level of consensus to craft the resolution for consideration next week. So I'll get the right mouse. So right now, we're talking about what we have, these are the requests that we receive for community donations, you got them in your packets, those are the amounts. We set the budget at the same budget funding level as last year, because other departments pretty much set it last year, which was $218,000. Anything beyond that, we're gonna have to find a way to, to pay for, quote unquote. But that, why I put this up front, is because this will inform the next conversation about what else you want to do. If you want to go higher than 218, that will be the starting point for the follow-on conversation that's coming up. So really, truly, this is your discussion. I'm gonna try to craft something to meet, to meet your needs. So I, with your agreement, Madam Mayor, I'll just turn it over to you.
All right. So where do you guys want to start? Well, if I could suggest, well, no, go ahead, you want to start with the grant, or not the grants, the donations? Is that where you're going with?
I was looking at the cash grants, not the in-kind donation.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So I came up with 207,707.
Okay, so what does that, what adjustments did you make?
That means we, and I can give my reasons why at the end. The Herndon, I'm just gonna start at the top.
Okay.
The Herndon High School ban, I would not recommend, the 500.
Okay.
The Herndon hospitality, no to the 1,000. The environmental, Herndon Environmental Network, no to 1,500. The Herndon Elementary School, 2,000 instead of 5,000. No to the all-ages-read-together, 50 to Next Stop Theater, and 50 to Arts Herndon. That's 108, and the HCTV is the 99.7770, which was 207.770, unless I added that wrong.
Okay. Okay, so that was, the adjustments were all on the right-hand column, which would be changing the Herndon Elementary School PTA, which requested 5,000, putting that at 2,000?
Right.
Not all-ages-read-together, that being zero.
Zero.
Next Stop, 50,000, Arts Herndon, 50,000, and the, on the other side was...
Right.
Basically, taking out...
The band, the high school band.
The band, Jambrew, hospitality, and the Herndon Environmental Network, all being zero cash, and remaining, the PTA, Herndon High School, remaining the same.
Right.
Okay, if you want to throw out your rationale, and then we'll...
Yeah, I've talked to some people that are big band supporters, and their feeling is, we can make that up in the community, because there are some people in the community that, when the band needs something, they call them, and that 500 can be taken care of at the high school level, and it is also being taken care of at the middle school level when people need that. The hospitality, we didn't do anything in cash last year, but we are donating in-kind. The environmental, Herndon Environmental Network, it wasn't really clear, and it looked like what they were asking for, we've already funded. It wasn't anything additional. The elementary school, that was all for transportation for schools, so I just thought, oh, bring it down. And the all-ages-read-together is a school function, which is not part of the town. Next Stop Theater and Herndon Arts, I was just trying to keep it a little more than we did last year, but, but these group, these amounts, to me, go with our vision for the town, the 2020 vision, with the arts, the entertainment, bringing community together, et cetera. The Kids at Hope, I know is something that Herndon does with the, one of the elementary schools, I think.
I'm just over here adding to see...
Did that come up?
What did you say, 107 is what you thought?
I think that's what I got.
Yes, that's what it came up to. Okay, good.
So that's what I came up with, so there's another $10,000 worth of math money in there, I guess, if you want to spend 10 more thousand dollars.
So did you remove Kids at Hope?
No, the Kids at Hope was there, the elementary school went to 2,000, 5, 2,000.
And you took it to the PTSA?
Yes, took it to PTSA, because that's...
That's the all-may-brad party.
Okay. Bill, do you want to see what I did?
Sure.
Okay, I made a few copies, I didn't...
Appreciate it.
So I can support a lot of what you just shared personally. I have, no, I don't put a lot of stock into the rumor mill, because you know, it's a little crazy, but I have heard some rumblings that maybe Jambrew is reorganizing and not going to occur in the same way. I have not had that confirmed, but, but if we are, we haven't given them cash in the past, I don't believe, or if we have, it's been very little. So keeping the in-kind in place seems to make sense. I also, in speaking with people who are affiliated, not in the Herndon Environmental Network, but who are associated with them in this project, I was feeling like now that they've gotten several other grants, and I have heard that now they're having a little bit of trouble actually getting the manpower to do some of the work that they finally have funding for. So I can support, based on that, maybe not contributing this year and considering it for next year. Cindy?
So I more or less agree with all of the things we've said. I'm still, I reread the Kids at Hope application, and I read their finances, and I still don't understand what they do. I got, I finally kind of looked through their, their finances, and it looks like they spent about 5,000 of the about $8,000 they raised last year on a conference, and that sort of mystified me, but I might be wrong about that. So I'd like to look at that again. It looked like there was something called the Masters Institute that a lot of people went to, and I don't really know what that is. And then everything else was photocopies and t-shirts and name tags. So I, I understand they do something really good, I cannot figure out from their application what exactly it is that they do, except obviously, it's a good thing. I agree about the Herndon Hospitality Association, I hadn't heard anything about them not doing it this year. Their application said they wanted the extra funds, just in case it rains, so that they would not lose money, and I, I think that's, I wouldn't really support spending it on that. The band uniforms, I don't really have a problem with that, but it's true, there are other people in the community who would fund that. The environmental network, I've started doing a little bit of work with them, and I know they, they probably don't need, they're really kind of focused on one thing right now, and probably won't miss $1,500, which they said they wanted to use for things like website, movie licenses, printing, banners, speakers, and I think those are pretty easy to find some other way. So I support the amounts you suggest, Sheila. I think the arts groups, I would like next, to have a serious discussion after we finish with this budget about going forward, but at this point, I think your suggestion makes a lot of sense for them, so, that's, I agree.
Other comments, questions, or anything? Bill?
I can, I can get behind what Sheila has said. I would like to see, obviously, said in the past, I would like to see maybe moving forward some sort of mathematical equation that would correspond with, you know, grants and things like that. I think that way we can just, instead of arbitrarily, just, you know, and again, I don't think people are doing this arbitrarily, I just do think that if we have a process in place, it takes the emotion and sometimes ill-will out of things. I think if we put a process in place, that will certainly help. The Kids at Hope, I'm for this. I was actually, I was at a situation, last week, Cindy had a group of people from the community center getting some training, and it's, you know, helps at-risk children. We do have a, you know, Title I school. I do think, even though we have to separate school from town because of, you know, being a town versus a city, I do think we do have responsibility to help those who can't help themselves. And rather than be, the overarching theme was, instead of being at risk, be at hope. So making opportunities for kids that might not have them. So I do think we have an obligation as a town to fight for those who can't, that can't fight for themselves. But I, I do agree with Sheila, I think this is something I can definitely get behind. I think it's, it's fair and equitable, and, you know, at the same time, I just, moving forward, I think we do have to have a process in place, but I agree with you.
Other comments or questions?
I agree with Vice Mayor, with the budget, with the, I mean, the donation, with minor improvements, I mean, those 500, $1,000, or 500, $1,000, $1,500, even if you remove, that's not going to impact our budget big time. So I think we should, if that is adding value, those are small amounts, you know, it's like investing back to the kids and community, and, you know, removing that does not, you know, have a lot of revenue in our, or reserve in our budget. So I would love to keep those as it is. Rather, we can just take, let's say, 10,000 from Next Stop Theater, 25,000 from Arts Herndon, and 30,000 from AARG, and that will take 65,000 away, and that brings to 213,000, and we should be good to go. And also, I agree with Bill, we should have a process in place, just like corporates, they, they give back to community, but there is a certain percentage, right, of their revenues and whatever, as a corporate social responsibility. We, as a government, are investing back to the community and organization that are actually working to bring the quality of life in, in Herndon. So, you know, whatever, certain percentages of budget. So when the budget goes up, when the revenue goes up, you know, the grant can also go up, it can be adjusted, but if we have some kind of calculation or process in place, then we already know how much we have and how much we are giving away, I think that would make it easier. So, yeah.
Yeah, we, we looked at processes before, and I don't think we were looking at it in that vein, and someone mentioned last week that different, other organizations say you can request up to 15% or 20% or whatever, and I think that would be a great way to look at it, and it simplifies it as well, so we could justify our...
That's objective versus subjective.
Other comments yet?
So just, so I'm clear on the context of this discussion? This is at the current advertised meal tax of 1.5% or 1%?
This is at 1%, this is the base budget, it contributes 1%.
So let me put some thought on why it should be 1.5%. Because all of these are very deserving entities, and I think for the longest time, I've, I've not heard the required sort of long-term desired outcome communicated to, to people, and why these things are important to invest. We tend to have these year-over-year discussions of 5 to 30 grand. I think we should start really looking at our long-term vision of what and why people, families, businesses, dollars should come to Herndon, and make a determination on what those entities that are going to help us draw people here, and make those like a top-tier or strategic entity that we are aligning ourselves with. I think we have to be smart in aligning these resources, because these are our tax dollars, with those long-term desired outcomes. So I, I think, you know, personally, I think the, the arts community should get more than what we're planning for here. I think everyone should be included, which is why I think it's important to increase to the 1.5% that we talked about. In addition, when do we have that discussion that I want to have on the P-PAC?
That's very nice. So, so Penner, you sent me here, that's gonna set the page over for the next conversation.
And that's why I'm saying, because, just in my humble opinion, we have not invested enough, I think, and I think people, if you talk to them, if you're clear on what your desires are, they will support the investment, because we're all here, we all live here, and I don't think anyone is here to waste anyone's money. We all would pay these taxes, we all would, you know, certainly pitch into it. So that's why I think it's imperative to look at this more long-term, as opposed to a year-over-year fight over kind of what's on the table.
So the 218 is just what was proposed, what we funded last year, and...
Same funding levels last year, which was a 20% increase over previous year. And we kept, because all the other departments, everything else in operations, were staying at, within a tenth or a 20, two-tenths percentage point.
So Sheila's suggestions brought us to just under 208, so 10,000 math money, so to speak. And if we were to put back in the school-related events, as Pradeep suggested, we would still be under that 218 without even looking at the meals tax.
Which school?
Yeah.
How related events?
Well, Pradeep was proposing that we consider...
500 for the high school?
Yes, and the...
And the 3,000.
The additional 3,000 for...
The elementary.
The elementary school.
Gotcha. I'm just trying to keep my numbers.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I know. Because I thought that when we were looking at the, perhaps an additional 5.5 on the meals tax, that was to try and hit, hit some of these unfunded priorities.
Right.
Correct. So we still, with no, with only one cent change, we can still fund all of this, it seems like, as proposed by Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Olum and Councilmember DeCall, is that right?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. So, wow, we could actually come to consensus on the donations, that would put us in a great spot for the meals tax discussion.
So we're basically agreeing not to fund the Herndon Hospitality Jambrew 1,000, the 1,500, which the Herndon Environmental Network probably isn't even going to get to use this year anyway.
And the all-ages-read-together.
And the all-ages-read-together, and then...
And then the adjustments, the rest of the adjustments were, as you suggested.
Okay.
I mean, I could live with that.
Yeah. It's the minimus.
Yep. And it still puts us under 218. So what does it leave us with?
I have your...
210?
211, 200. I'm showing.
I'm not feeling like we necessarily have to spend all 218, and there are maybe other things that come up throughout the year.
There are usually things that come up throughout the year.
And given that these are donations, if they have, well, I don't want to go there, but...
I think if, if possible, too, moving forward, if there's any way to, I think HCTV shouldn't be part of this, in my opinion, if there's a way to make that an item in the budget, because what they're providing is the ability for people to see what's going on with their government. I think it's a government function more than it is an entertainment function, so I would like to see that in a budget versus...
Well, or even if it's not a line item, if that complicates things, we just know that we typically just fund their requests, because it is a government service, right? Even if it is in this, in this pod.
Okay.
I, I like that.
Yeah.
If you're suggesting it become part of the town, sort of operations ownership of that.
Yes. We'd have to look at that from a procurement perspective. Yeah, right. Because they are a standalone 501(c)(3).
No, 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 no. Okay, then I misunderstood. I'm, I was hearing, or I just kind of heard that, we as the township own that.
Well, I, I think that, what I heard was that we should just know that we're going to fund their request, and not, it's, it's never really up for discussion.
I think, I don't disagree with you on that, but I do think that's a, that's a deeper process that has to go through.
Okay, I thought you were going...
No, 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 but I do think that it shouldn't be part of this, because I do think it just, it adds to the...
Their own line.
Yes. When we looked at that two years ago, there were some procurement issues, but we can circle back right again.
I think that we are talking about the same thing, it's just that we're, the line item just puts complications in it.
Right.
If it's still here and we treat it as a line item, it's just out of this, this pot.
Just pick it.
It's still the same thing. And so we've had this, we've had some ongoing discussions about it, and there's some complications that just...
No, no, no.
Not that we can't continue to look at, but it is complicated.
Again, let me clarify, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
To be clear, again, I'm not talking about putting a line item for a 501(c). I thought you were talking about making it a function of the town to own the production, distribution, the sort of broadcasting of that.
No, not right now, no.
Maybe.
I'm not saying whether we should or shouldn't, that's what I thought you was talking about.
No, we, how we would handle it is we'd put a line item in for video production of council meetings, we'd have a line item, then we'd have to award it to somebody, and that's where the complications were coming in. So that's, that's kind of where we press pause, and say, let's keep it in the grants, donations line for now, and we'll circle back.
Because what could feasibly happen is Fairfax Phil glass access comes in, and do we want to open up that? Or, maybe we do, I don't know, I don't know about it.
Well, I will say, when I came up with this, I did not include, HCTV was where they were, but if we brought HCTV on as staff, then we're going to be staffing all those people, so, and that's why the arts are such a good deal. We get all these things for the community without having to hire all those people.
Okay, so, so are we at consensus on basically the combination of Sheila and Pradeep's suggestions?
I'm okay with it.
I like it. This could be a record-short conversation on donations.
Just, just, just to recap, so I make sure the resolution is correct. HCTV, 99.7.
Yes.
Herndon High School band, 500. Jambrew, Herndon Environmental Network, nothing.
And crash, correct.
Herndon High School PTSA, 2,000. Is that correct? Kids at Hope, Herndon, 4,000. Herndon Elementary, PTA, 5,000. All-ages-read-together, 0. Next Stop, 50. Arts Herndon, 50. For a grant total, 211, 200.
I didn't add it up, but I trust you.
I just switched chain, so I'm just plugging numbers over.
So I just want to say that I feel like last week, I totally concur with what we just decided, I'm 100% on board. Last week, there was a lot of public comment trying to sell us on the value that the arts brings to the town, and I don't think that any of us need to be sold on that. The only thing that I just have a question about, and hopefully, moving forward, we might get more information on this. We have one group, one arts group that has, and I'm bringing this under scrutiny only because it's such a large amount of money, that has provided pages and pages of profits and loss, tax, tax documents showing, you know, all the things that that shows, and a, a, they're in the black. Now, both of them are in the black, but the other organization only has one very small balance sheet, which the only thing in it that jumps out at me that's a little bit concerning is that the fiscal year net income was a negative almost $70,000. And so I feel like there must be more to the story than this, because this is a very small snapshot of a financial piece, and we're getting a lot more than that from, from some of the other organizations. And so if we're looking at a process going forward, maybe we need to consider getting more specific with exactly all the items that we need to get, because I think that, I, I know that I want to go out into the community and justify this investment in our arts groups, and I want to be able to weigh things in the air at people that, that don't share that, that, that value for the arts groups, and I want to be sure that, that we're able to defend what we're giving, and, and the arts groups as well. So that's all. Yes.
So I think this is an unusual year for one of the arts groups, because they are in terminal limbo, and when they try to set things up, they don't know if they're moving out, or going to a new place, or where that would be. So I know that that has caused a lot of issues. So if you go back to the year before, and the year before that, and the year before that, I think you're going to find a different...
Well, this was for 2018, is what was submitted, the numbers of...
Right. Well, that's all they could submit, but if you want to go back and look at their history, I don't think it is showing a negative history, they are in terminal limbo until the downtown gets rid. And we've been on hold for, hmm, since last summer. Since last summer, when the lawsuit and the appeals and so forth started, so that puts them on hold.
Bless you.
And we thought we were going to be moving them out last fall.
There is a quarter million dollars in the budget with the comprehensive agreement to get...
But that doesn't help you schedule things, when you don't know if you're going But that doesn't help you schedule things when you don't know if you're going to be here or not.
That is true. I'm just saying that I anticipate members of the community that I know that will come forward, given the opportunity, and wave this around, and I want to be able to confidently say, let me give you the whole picture. So that's, that's why I'm bringing that up for going forward.
Bring that forward, too.
All right, so where does this bring us now? The meals tax discussion?
Now, we flip over to unfunded priorities. This is a, based on our conversation a couple weeks ago, we kind of honed down on a couple of thematic topics. And so those will be presented here, open for your discussion, very similar to the last one. We had, we put a placeholder, obviously, as I was saying, Cesar, TBD was any donations adjustments we had to make would start this conversation off. Now, it looks like you're starting at 6,800 in the black. So, put a placeholder for the PBAC projects at a 150 based on our conversation. You all seem to be interested consensus-wise on Assistant Town Attorney for 125. And then you were interested in putting these, these programs back in parks and like Family Fund Days, additional, Downtown Events, additional, and Kids at Hope, additional. And just to remind you, this is the, the difference in the meals tax, if you decide to go a half, another half percent or a quarter percent, those are the two.
Can these add up to 315?
No, they do not. They...
So it's adding up right now?
No, they do not. These were just thrown in there. Now, we could play, the PBAC project's number can change depending...
No, I'm just asking what they add up to.
I might go in a little faster.
I'm adding it up.
Okay. I should have thrown that down here on the slide.
418,500.
500?
418,500.
418,500. And then you have 6,800 there, so...
I see it.
412,300.
300?
Yeah.
Without the donations adjustment. So if we don't make any adjustment in the donations, it's 275.
We're ahead of the game.
Yeah, we're ahead of the game.
And I would suggest, if you do go the full, if you do go the full half at 450, and you're at 3 something, that we look at that as rolling that through to contingency to fund balance, to fund capital, like we were doing with the rest of the, you could do that, or you could do whatever you decide you want to do.
So, could I ask a question about the PBAC projects? Was, because I think we agree that all of these are important and need to be funded, but was some portion of that, we think, already accounted for in CIP funding?
I sent a dispatch to you all, I want to say, two Fridays ago, that I met with Bryce, I met with John at Cesar's, and we kind of went through them, and there were some projects that were incorporated in other road projects we were doing. Case in point, if we're paving a road and we're repairing sidewalk, we have to put ramps in, we have to bring it up to ADA compliance while we're doing it. So there's some of those projects contemplated in there. There was one project that had a lot of utility relocation, and we identified a grant stream that we're going to go after the summer to try to fill that hole. But the grant doesn't begin opening up until, I think, June or July.
So I think the thinking was to address the low-hanging fruit.
Right.
What is needed for safety. So, the installing of some crosswalks, these were the things that weren't planned or funded in the immediate future. And those were sort of the low-hanging, low-cost things that were, quite frankly, higher impact. I think if you can put in, you know, locate a visible crosswalk at a busy intersection, that's a good thing. Right? So, it was those types of things, and they're highlighted and colored. And I'll defer to Bryce or anyone else that wants to chime in on this that has more insight. The category of the recommendations to study for, for short-term action, that is not currently funded or devaluing, those are the ones that I think we're talking about. And there's about, you know, three to five of those. And if we could keep them under that number, or slightly around it, I think those would be a great win. Again, I think installing crosswalks when necessary is huge.
Just making that up. And those were...
Well, if you look at number one, if you look at number 14, look at number 17, sorry, take 17 back, 16, and I don't know what those costs are. There's a dollar sign, $2 signs, and $3 signs. I'm only talking about the 1s and 2s.
All right. So the fourth, so Project 1 Crosswalk, Crosswalk Improvement in Middle School, that is part, that'll be completed in 2019. That's already planned, scheduled, it's already funded. That's going to happen.
Number nine?
And John, please chime in if I am incorrect here. Number nine is, we are still evaluating that, because that's a, that's part of the Locust Street sidewalks project that we've been wrestling with for a while, but it runs for a significant distance. John, you care to put any color to that?
I don't have that permission from you right now.
No, it's the Locust Street sidewalks.
Locust Street sidewalks. We've, we've actually looked at that a number of times. There's a number of complicating factors, not that it's insurmountable. We've had some property owner issues, resistance to us taking it right away. There is also some previous work that had to take place that now has, meaning it got put on the side for a while. I think that's, that's worth revisiting. I can't guarantee that it's in the CIP now, currently for, I believe, 2022. But it's something that if we wanted to try to bring it forward and look at it again more quickly, that's perfectly okay.
Okay, that's part nine for right now. 14 and 16, we think there's not a problem getting those done for $15,000 a piece. That's, that, those we think are easily, can fit into the next year's work plan, in addition to the findings there, knocking those out relatively quickly.
And really, that's the spirit of this whole initiative, just...
Yeah. And that's, and that's what we're looking at, is when we did the scrub with Bryce and, and John, we sat down and said, look, let's look at what's already planned for, what's already funded, what's going to be really expensive, or the grant opportunities. There's one in there for Fairfax, it's Fairfax County. Let's, let's start that dialogue with the county, let's get that, and get them moving on it. And we, we saw the two low-hanging fruit, really that jumped off the page for us, were 14 and 16. They, they were like, we, we get those in the work plan. We talked to John, John's going to be, his staff is going to be pretty in the weeds next year. We're going to be doing Van Buren Street next week, next year as well. But we think we can manage to get these two projects put into place relatively easily.
So, would, would it be okay to suggest that we allocate some number in that range for these projects that we've identified, whether they be three of these or up to five? And is there a number people are comfortable with?
Well, are we trying to get to a certain, because right now, if we funded all of this, it's 319 for the whole page, which would be covered by an additional half-cent meals tax, correct? Are we trying to see if we can get it lower so that we are closer to the 0.25? I'm trying to figure out what's the goal.
Yeah, that's, you know, I'm flexible.
Yeah, I also think, too, don't we, I mean, we look at some, in six months, we recalibrate the budget, because obviously there's projections and things we don't see. So there might be a way to...
We, we've moved that six months to eight to nine months, once people comes in. So you'll be seeing that in May. We'll be talking about budget adjustments for the current fiscal year.
Yeah.
Just to, just to watch your scheduling.
Yeah, just the reason why I said, because again, I think because of projections, we might be able to, you know, kind of hold, and then we see what we have in realization, and then revisit and say, look, I think we need to recalibrate this, because we can move forward with that and still maintain the tax rate that we have. Does that make sense as far as...
You mean that's, that's suggested, the 1.0 or 1.25?
Well, probably 1, I would say, you know, where else would we be at besides 1.2? But I'm just saying, if we do 1.25 or 1.50, we'd be at the 150. But I do think we can calibrate a little bit to kind of, you know, just face upon, we can look at economic projections and see what the state has. And I think that could probably save us some, some tax money there, quarter point, maybe a half point, who knows?
If we were dropping, we dropped the PBAC down to 56,000, that would get you to 225. And that would give us the 230,000, two projects of $30,000, $26,000 to look at some of these other things. We would start the Fairfax County conversation, which we're doing anyway, and we're going to apply to that grant on the relocation.
And that was the second part of mine, because we couldn't, you know, what about getting matching grant money dollars because of, you know, we're, we're doing a public safety initiative. That could even go down to something like public safety with the DHS grant with fire departments, example, who knows?
So if we were to do what you just suggested, does that hit the priorities that you're, top-tier priorities?
So, I'm going to just prioritize the priorities. Okay?
Sure.
So, crosswalks.
Yep.
Okay, let's just cover all of those, and then see where we are as far as expanding this. Okay? So, that would be my ask.
And so if we do that, if we go that route, then the extra $26,000 would be seed money for additional sidewalks, or crosswalks, rather. And if we get down to, if we come up and we're $10,000 short, $20,000 short, that's within my budget transfer purview. I can move money to make that whole and make that happen, to meet you. And we'll obviously report back to you all as we're going through this. That's what you choose to do. And I just got a thumbs up for John Ires, we're good.
I really do think...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, the crosswalks are...
Yeah, for sure.
No, absolutely. There wasn't, we were looking through the list, there were very worthy things, but one of the things we're very sensitive to is we don't want to go through and put something down and come back two, a year later and tear something up to then put the next thing down, and try to make sure all these projects time in at the right time and place. As a matter of fact, you know, we're going to have to do some waterman work down to H-Toc, and it was, it was suggested to go up Van Buren Street. And I went, not two years after we've put Van Buren Street in, we're not tearing Van Buren Street back up. Find another path.
Right.
So, and we, and we are looking at another path right now. So, we, we're just trying to keep that...
Right. And I'm all for it, because again, we're having Metro come in in a year or two, and we want to make sure everyone can walk.
Better be in a year.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
And use their bike and use their wheelchair and use...
The walkable is a whole other discussion. I'll take this win.
Yeah, for sure.
I'll take this win.
We'll talk walkable next.
So what I'm hearing is we take these unfunded priorities, and the PBAC project number is now 56,000, which is crosswalks and the items we just talked about.
Yep.
That gets us to 225, which is an additional, instead of suggesting a 1.0 increase in the meals tax, it's a 1.25 increase.
So it'll be 375.
And that gets us, the total to this is 225, which equals out exactly.
That is correct.
And there's a little bit of fluff in there, because we didn't quite use all the 218.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of things like that in the budget, but I'm just saying...
Well, I've already programmed that back into contingency, so we see that in the resolution. So we programmed the extra 6,800 back into contingency, and then we could fund partially the sidewalks or any other thing that comes up.
And there's no real guarantee that adding a quarter of a percent to the meals tax is going to give us that exact amount of money.
Could be a little more, could be a little less.
Could be a little more, a little less. And actually, the, the projections between, that is conservative, cut at it. It's between 9 and 920 for each penny is roughly where we are. So, we took the 900, and we've been basing everything off the 900.
Well, and we are bringing in other businesses as well, so things are in flux.
Things are in flux.
We're just...
As they always are.
Was there any, well, first of all, how are we feeling about this?
How about the rest of those, besides PBAC? Is there any negotiation can be made?
What, you mean to, to go up or down?
Up or down, yeah.
Town attorney's kind of...
Well, we think the town attorney may actually cost less than this, correct?
Right.
But this is the projection.
But I didn't want to overstate that, because a lot of the, a lot of things that Lisa sends out with contract attorneys are very special. HR-related or benefits-related, and that's a specialized law area. And so, it was hard to kind of parse apart her contract attorney line item to figure out how much that would really affect. So that's why we kept it at the base number. I didn't want to overpromise something and then put this in the box.
So, Bill, is, are these numbers what was requested?
Yes.
Okay, so, so this is what these different departments think is what they need to make these things happen?
Yes.
I'm sure they would take more, but this is what they've asked for.
And then there were some other things on the list, obviously, that came up. I mean, the police asked for two officers that, that then Maggie very graciously said, you know, I work the attorney a lot, we need to have more attorney support than any officers on the street right now to support this. Instead, we had some other things in there, a refugee supervisor, but we're, we're going to try to tackle that another way. So, you know, there's, every year, there are things that we look and go, you know what, why don't we just take a different look at this, other than just throw money at it? And so that was the rest of the list, that when we were talking around this table, that you all were lukewarm or not even cold on. These were the things that, there was somewhat a consensus building behind doing them. That's why we presented these back up to you.
So, Pradeep, did you have any suggestions or something you were concerned about?
No, I'm just throwing the question if we want to discuss.
Okay. Do we want to discuss that?
If anybody has an idea.
So, I, I really, I mean, we have three different kinds of things in here. We have a, we have a piece of, of property, you know, the PBAC projects, those are, those are solid things. We have a town attorney who is an ongoing cost, although possibly not as much as this. And then we have short-term things that can be, can be removed if necessary. So, to me, these are, this is a really good mix of things that we couldn't really afford to do in the whole budget, but if we add this little bit in, will make a big difference in our town. I support these, all of them.
Any other discussion on this?
I think with the economy looking like it's going to continue, I think this is safe. So, no, I think it's safe.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I feel, I feel decent about it. We will, of course, present this to the public next week and see what they think. They may have completely different ideas, but barring, and I can get with Jen Baker, who's not here, and just update her, or maybe somehow we can alert her to what's been discussed here, so that she is prepared next week.
She could listen to the recording.
Yeah, she could.
You're welcome.
She's starting very good. You're on fire. So, was there any other, from your perspective...
This is it. We can write resolutions now. We can...
Okay, well, is there anything, like, that someone's thought of that needs to come up now? Nothing like an April surprise.
Was there anything that was a priority from department heads that we couldn't fund?
I'm sure there's a list.
There were. I mean, the, the next thing on the list was a risk manager. Personality, you kind of want to go very cautiously towards, because you don't want to have to cut them. As far as the, the big-ticket items, not really. Again, this is, we, we took a pretty tough look at this once we got that B poll news. So, again, every year, we, we get that.
So, let me disclose, I was giving you an opening for Assistant Town Manager.
Well, I don't think that's on the table.
I, I appreciate that.
I still think the number of reports you have is way too many.
I'm not going to disagree with you, since I've been doing nothing but outperformance evaluations over the past couple of weeks.
So, the, the one item that really jumps out to me that is not funded, that it doesn't look like we're going to be able to fund, is the risk manager position. And so I would like to keep that in our thoughts of, you know, how we might address those concerns, or if we need to be thinking for the next budget, like making that a priority, see if it is still a priority, because I think that, that if I had a magic wand, that's what I would want to add to this budget.
No, I think, I think what we could do, I think the Assistant Town Attorney takes a little bit of pressure off in that regard. It's Jenny smiling over there, I'm not sure. She's smiling all of a sudden. Almost like a big grin went across her face.
One of the trifecta.
Yeah, because we, we have a risk through the attorney's office, through finance, and through HR. And by having Assistant Town Attorney, we're able to take some of that burden and shift it more towards...
So if we're able to make, make that higher and see what happens in the next year, it may be more or less of a priority.
Absolutely. Now, Barry Montanis, Becker's, runs daggers in my back, I'm sure, but...
Lisa, that is for you, God. I, I will say that some of the preventive things can't, won't happen without a risk manager. Those sort of programs, ongoing, won't be able to be addressed.
Well, we won't be able to consolidate a lot. A case in point, I don't want you all thinking that we don't do preventative risks. We have a safety program in the shop that is dedicated solely to that. Maggie has very strict administrative regulations down there, general orders down there that focus on safety and policies on how to keep their officers safe. So, we, we still do it, it's just trying to tie all that together and get some consistency across all the departments.
Plans, plans, policies, procedures.
That's where we're more lacking.
Townwide, right. Sheila?
Yes, and part of this is to help finance with the meals tax collection and bonneting.
No, that was going to be a conversation we need to have with the county regarding real estate tax to free up some, some personnel. That is a bigger question, because when we, there is enabling legislation in the state that allows a county to administer a town's real estate tax receipts for them, but unfortunately, they wrote it solely for Loudon.
Okay, this is really weird.
So, we need to go and petition our legislators to... So we need to go and petition our legislators to extend that to beyond Loudon. Because we stole the idea from Loudon is where we got it. And when we tried to, when Jenny started making the phone calls, Fairfax went, we can't do that.
So is that on the legislative agenda, Liz?
It is, and it's not unusual when people find localities named in all sorts of places in the code where they've gotten, you know, the committee said, well, as long as it's just the one. Or two.
They do it on purpose because they want control as a whole Richmond versus local thing, so I mean, totally, we can go into that all day. Till then, we'll indeed.
So do you feel like you have what you need for a resolution to present to the public?
I, I believe we did, yes. And since Jenny's gonna be doing the writing. Unfortunately, John Casella had a family emergency, had to leave, go to New York for the rest of this week, so Jenny will be writing it.
Cool. All right. Any other comments or questions, concerns before we move on? Maybe the neatest budget discussion we ever have. Well done, people.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have, let's see, three ordinances here to consider proper condition amendment PCA number 1901 at 525 Grove Street, PCA 1902, and a special exception 1902, they're all related. So I'm gonna recognize the deputy director of community development, who I'm gonna also chastise because he's on leave for spring break and he's here tonight, Bryce, overachiever. We do appreciate you coming in, but you certainly don't have to do that. So we're gonna do the staff reports concurrently on these three items and then we can ask questions, make comments and that sort of thing. At next week's public hearing, staff report and public hearings will be confirmed, followed by separate action on each item.
They still hear thunder? Do you remember my surface around Long Island? I saw this, it's not John, because John will destroy the camera.
So nobody cared what I just said, but Bryce is gonna tell us what we need to know and next week we're gonna vote on them separately and hear about them all at the same time. There you go.
It's a three-for-one special time.
That's right.
Okay, so this three cases proposing a telecommunications facility located at 525 Grove Street. This is the Dominion Energy Substation, Substation Site. Essentially for the zoning to be able to allow this type of use, it needs to be rezoned through two proper condition amendments and it needs a special exception. So that's why we have all three for this. The zoning of the site is currently regulated by two previous zoning amendments, AMA 02102 and 02103. Those essentially allow for this site to have been developed the way it is with the substation site. Anything that occurs on the site that is not substantial performance with that, those rezonings and the generalized development plan that was part of those rezonings requires a rezoning of the property, in this case, the two proper condition amendments. Process it follows is just like many other rezoning. So plan permission serves it in an advisory capacity and of course you all make the legislative act on it. The zoning ordinance does allow for pre-standing telecommunications facilities such as this by special exception in all standard zoning districts, so anything through R10 is opposite industrial. Though, certain, there are certain standards, certain provisions in the code, in the zoning code that must be met to be able to do this, at least have to do with the height of the monopole, the size of the antennas, the color of it, how it's screened, and several other things. The SE decision can be conditioned, which is what will be recommended by staff in this case. And the special exception can all be approved if the two proper condition amendments are first approved. So if there's any sort of holdup with the PCA's, if they're denied, you would be able to report with the special exception. So 525 Grove Street, it's a little less than 1.5 acre site, abutting the WOD trail with access up Grove Street. Nearest residential is about a fifth of a mile away, that's just west of Van Buren Street, the Arlington Oaks neighborhood. And the property is split zoned, it's, this happens in a few places in town. Essentially, biceps down the middle, the west side is CS and the right side is opposite industrial. CS is partial service. So for the facility itself, it includes a, a tower, a monopole, we call them, 125 feet maximum height, that's what's permitted by the zoning ordinance, that's what they're proposing here. And then a 100 foot by 15 foot screened ground compound, it's gonna be screened landscaping and screened with a fence. The fence is not normally permitted by code, so it's part of the proper condition events, they are requesting a zoning modification to do a fence versus a wall, which is what we apply in that code. I'll get into that in a little bit. So this is the outline of where the facility is gonna be located. The blue here is the extent of the substation. And there is a spur trail to the WOD along the, just off the property line to the west, that's the green highlighted area here. And the orange highlighted area is, let me get to it a second here, that is the current access into the substation off of Grove Street. And access to the facility would be gained using that same drive. So the vehicles could go all the way up to this point here and then they would have to, whoever is trying to gain access to the site within, go on foot from, from the driveway over to the facility. And then of course, there's a landscaping component to this. There, there's quite a few trees and shrubs that will have to be removed to accommodate the, the facility and they'll be replaced at a one-for-one ratio. So every tree will be replaced, every shrub will be replaced, just not necessarily in the same area. Okay, this is what it looks like today for maybe two months ago, it's a little greener now, I'm sure. The big photo is the landscape buffer, the existing landscape buffer, and then you've got the trail off, off here. It's kind of variable width, but it's an eight feet asphalt trail. You see the substation here behind the trees, you have the, there's a 15 foot tall masonry wall on the north side of the existing substation, that's the edge of the pier, and it drops down to around a, I think, seven or eight foot high chain link fence behind those streets. And that's what encloses the, the substation on the east, west and south side. There is a few stormwater facilities nearby, more directly underneath actually the proposed facility, there's a bioretention pond area, which is right, shown right here, and this is the existing access drive, it's kind of gravelly. There's also a drainage swale, getting back to stormwater, that essentially runs along the substation fence, really right in the area where the, where the proposed telecommunications facility would be located. This shot over here too is a good shot of that 15 foot high masonry wall on the side of the substation. Okay, there's some photo simulations that were provided by the applicant, I put a few of them on this presentation, the minimums from each direction. One in the north, the one from, on top is from the north from Elden Street, behind the flagship car wash you see over here. This was an additional one that we had asked for them to provide, this is from Van Buren Street, the west of the site, and essentially it's, it's similar to the view that those closest residential properties will see. Of course, in the foreground you have the transmission tower, so one of the things that staff talks about, the staff report about, is one good thing about choosing this site for a telecommunications monopole is that there's already transmission lines right next to it, that range anywhere between the 220 feet height. A couple more of these, this is the shot from the south, from Spring Street, it kind of gets a bit lost in the trees. This is a good view of what it would look like from the east, driving down Grove Street. It's, it's a good shot because right around when you're taking that turn around, where that's gonna be center view for you. This is showing three platforms of antennas, there's no, the actual number of antennas and number of platforms aren't specified in the application, nor is staff recommending any sort of cap to it. The idea there really is, there's already gonna be a monopole there, if we want to consolidate as many antennas on there as possible, so we just want to put a cap on it. The applicant worked pretty closely with staff as we went through this process and made several changes throughout. I have some of the most notable ones here. For one, the entire facility, again, that's in yellow here, will be located within an existing 30 foot wide landscape buffer area. So obviously landscaping was a big, a big component of this. And at first it was not a one-for-one tree replacement and there was quite a few trees and shrubs that were gonna be replaced and, that were gonna be removed but not replaced. We were able to work with the applicant to get it back to a one-for-one and really the only area that essentially no longer has landscape on it is exactly the area where the compound would be located and then an eight foot wide area to allow that pedestrian, that pedestrian access from the access drive to a gate, a single gate that's on the compound, on the north end of the compound. Another change that was made was a physical barrier, in this case, two bollards were added to the end of the access drive. There was a lot of concern that it was just a little too tempting for trucks to just go off, off-site and get onto the trail and drive down the trail and park over here to gain access, it would be closer. And actually, the existing road does go off-site and attach to that trail. So wanted to make sure that car is new to stop right there, in this case, they'll be forced to. And the fence material was another change that was made in the process here, originally the proposal was for chain link with barbed wire. Both of those are not permitted by code, modifications were requested to allow it, but staff on other land supported that, that type of fence material for this, so they changed it to a decorative black metal fence, of course pursuant to future ARB approvals. Okay, so the modification, two modifications actually, both tied to the same thing. Section 78, 71.13 essentially requires these types of telecommunications facilities to have either a solid fence or a solid wall. In this case, their request would be to allow the more open style fence. And then section 78, 114.2 requires, and this is, this is part of the buffer requirement section of the zoning ordinance, requires that it be screened with a masonry wall. And that's, that is required anytime that mechanical, ground mounted mechanically units are visible from a public right of way. In this case, we consider the WODA public right of way is visible from that. So the modification would be again, to not, not put a masonry wall in, but instead do an over fence. The, the applicant cited security concerns regarding a solid wall or solid fence, creates hidden areas, places for somebody to hide inside the compound. And of course, also cited the fact that there's gonna be a fairly healthy landscape buffer outside the fence that will serve further screening. Staff agreed with that assessment and support, and supports the modification request, and plan commission did so as well. And so staff's recommendation is for approval of the two draft ordinances, those that's for each of the PCA's. And for a special exception resolution with the conditions that are listed here, a lot of them are sort of standard when it comes to special exceptions. Substantial conformity essentially saying that what gets built has to remain substantial conformity with what is shown on the plan. That was part of the special exception, permitted use limits the use to what's shown in the special exception application. It reiterates that the need for a site plan and ARB approval is part of this. Those are required, but this just adds some added insurance to that. The two that are sort of more customized for this special exception are the stormwater management and the access to the site conditions. The stormwater management is really tied to the fact that there are those stormwater BMPs that are very close or around, right below where the facility is gonna go. So that condition essentially says, when they come in for their site plan, they're gonna do all the analysis, that's absolutely necessary, so staff verify that there's no negative impacts to any of the facilities. Stormwater still moves the way it was intended to.
What's a BMP?
Oh, best management practice. And access to the site, this goes back to the original concern of, of going off-site onto that trail to gain access to the facility. Of course, we have those bollards that were put in there, we wanted to sort of supplement that with a commission in here, just to really make sure that there's no off-site access to the facility. And then of course, the inspection, the expiration, the application, that essentially just sets the conditions for when each of those things can occur. Those are standard conditions. So I have.
Okay, questions for staff? Siggy?
So you said originally that they were required to put up a masonry wall, but they felt that there'd be a security issue and they wanted to put up a chain link fence and barbed wire, but you talked them back to a decorative fence. What was the original purpose for the fence being masonry instead of, you know, just this decorative?
Strictly visual screening. So you didn't, couldn't, you couldn't see what, so you didn't see any of the mechanical screening?
And so I listened to the, to the planning, or watched the planning commission discussion and, and some of it seemed to talk about sound, so they're building generators back there? If there's no access except by foot, how are they gonna build that? Is that they gonna, before they put the wall up?
When, when it's built, they'll be, I'm, I'm sure there'll be driving, construction vehicles down there to drop, to drop into the cabinets and, and the generators. If any of, if a new carrier comes in and wants new cabinets and wants a generator and it's gonna happen occasionally, and obviously it's already built, say it's two years down the road, then we would, they would have to send a site plan to us and we have to essentially make sure at that time that they're not gonna be impacting the existing landscape and they're gonna have to find a way to do it. And at that time, we'll also make sure that if there's any sort of noise issues that meets our noise levels, they might be able to run some of those test, so we can verify that.
So they said that it was 76 decibels at 7 yards or something like that? Is that, and I looked that up, that's basically a lawnmower sound, is that right?
That's right. The applicant should be a little higher model than that.
So to be, just, I mean, it's a cell tower, I mean, how much construction will there be, I mean, it's similar to a Sky crane, like it won't be weeks, it's.
It's a generator, I was thinking.
Oh, yeah, I know, but, yeah, but that's, I don't think it'll be, is what it is.
Right, it's, it's a, it's a relatively narrow facility and, I mean, they might have to get a lift and a crane and then drop, drop it in later on if they're installing it, but later on, but I'm not exactly sure.
So they have a plan, is what you're saying?
They have a plan.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Like we said, next week though, we will have the same, a similar concurrent staff report and we have to take separate action on each of those items related to this. All right, thank you, Bryce.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, appreciate it.
Yes, definitely.
I go back and forth, my bad.
Now get out.
Walk those two blocks back to your house.
So we have just one general item, which is a resolution, it's an initiating resolution for zoning ordinance text amendment for Plan Development Urban Residential. And Lisa Gillaran, our director of community development, will give us the staff report. And if there's anybody in the audience that are at the table, is it an initiating, or da, I can't speak, an initiating resolution? The point of that is the council saying, yes, we'd like for the planning commission to take this through the process. So we aren't deciding that this is what we definitely want, and we're deciding that we'd like this for, so. Take any time to get to the table? There you go.
And you actually gave part of my presentation?
Oh, sorry.
What you have before you this evening is an initiating resolution that would move forward to the planning commission for consideration of zoning text amendment for a new zoning district called the PDUR, which is Plan Development Urban Residential. This is the outcome of the. This is the outcome of the South Elmond Area Plan that you approved a few weeks ago. If you remember, there were several different tiers within that plan, and one of them was for an urban residential district that would serve as a transition zone between the more intense development that may occur along the Eldon Street corridor for the mixed use with retail and residential, whereas, as you move closer into the established neighborhoods behind that, then we would want something that would be purely residential but would mix different types of residential. So that is what the staff has attempted to write in the zoning text amendment. It would allow up to three different types of residential, the primary ones being the townhouse, if you consider a traditional form townhouse, I'm not talking about the architecture here, but the, the way it lives, the two, three floors, probably three floors, one, you know, on top of the other unit attached to other units in a line, versus, say, a two over two, like the Stanley Martin product that you see down in the metro area, that would be another type that would be allowed by this zoning text amendment. So you would see a development that would be combining these different types of living units to try to provide a greater, greater choice of living types of units and possibly even price points within that community. Other features of this particular zoning district as drafted include requirements to ensure that the streetscape on private streets reflects our guidelines for streetscapes on public streets, and some others that, some other factors regarding the overall appearance of the district and how common open space needs to be done in such a way as it's useful, it can't just be kind of those redundant spaces that you see in some developments that actually has to have consolidated open space that can serve as areas to recreate. So the staff report does name several key factors that are built into the language as it's currently drafted, such as the parking lot areas can't be visible from public streets, buildings must be oriented towards the streets, low impact design must be used to meet stormwater requirements, that doesn't mean necessarily that all the stormwater requirements would be low impact, but it has to be introduced at some point within the design, and buildings will need to achieve LEED certification or CECL. Those are the particulars, some of the particulars of the zoning text amendment itself, but as the mayor explained, what you have before you is the initiating resolution that really simply just places this in the hands of the planning commission so that they can consider it, that they can hear from the general public regarding it, as well as we anticipate an actual applicant for a rezoning to this district. And that is for the site that's behind what used to be the Giant Shopping Center, those four office buildings we discussed during the South Elmond Area Plan. So the applicant would be the owner of that property, and they've been seeking a potential rezoning, been interested in a rezoning for quite a while now, to turn that from underused aging offices to the residential. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Lisa?
Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that the recommendation is to approve their project. You received an updated.
Minor update. Inadvertently, they had recommended not approving it. They were just making sure we were reading it, that's all.
Seems like extra work.
Trick question.
So if there's consensus among council, we could, we can move this to VA's consent item next week since it's simply sending it to the planning commission. I agree, does that work? Yes, sir.
I know it's still preliminary to allow the review, but is that something that the public should comment or have an opportunity to?
They can still comment on it if it's a consent item, but I'm just asking if you'd like to move it, I'm certainly fine with having the staff report next week in general terms, whatever you guys think. Sheila.
Well, and also, when it's general, they need to make their comments at the beginning of the meeting and not when we're talking about it, so.
I think Sarah's question is, did we want the staff report for the public next week? And I am fine with whatever the.
I think it's, it's, yeah.
It remains on general?
My last question was, when do they want to start?
Two years ago.
Yeah.
It was when it came up and, and that's how it was sprung, the whole area.
Exactly.
Opened bigger questions and bigger scouts.
It's only been two years?
Okay, so it will remain on, on a general, and we do have just one consent on general item, which is a proclamation recognizing building safety month, which we actually present every five years, but the staff wants to receive it as a consent item, so. Any comments on that one? Here's your chance. All right, that brings us to roundtable, who's next to us? Phil.
Just have one thing, I was, just alluded to it earlier, but Cindy Roder had her group with the Kids of Hope, they had a presentation, it was really good, I really appreciate you inviting me to that, just to see, you know, what they're doing at the grassroots level and, you know, what I was hand to hand, you know, talking and transacting, so, I really appreciate it, just a good event tonight, that's all I got.
All right, who's next? Cindy, you have anything for us?
Nothing much, just wanted to update, I attended the Rotary Club banquet honoring Manny Fero, never got a chance to meet him before, but what I learned about him, sorry?
I said that you're sorry now.
Yeah. So what I learned is he was a great human being, and the work he did and the legacy he left was great, and I'm, I was very honored to be at that place and honoring him as the Citizen, Rotary Citizen, 53rd Citizen of the Year, right? So it was, it was a great event and so much to learn from that gentleman, and I'm very inspired learning about, you know, what he did, and it's very tragic that, you know, he left us too soon, but I think good people are needed somewhere else also, right? So yeah, yeah, that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. Cindy.
I too, went to the Rotary Citizen of the Year one more.
And heard Councilmember Olum give the proclamation, it was a great event, lots of great people were there, it was nice to see Jimmy, have run a number of Rotary and Arts for London golf tournaments with him, and so it was really nice to see him and all the other guys. So it was a good event, very inspiring, and I think every now and then we need some inspiration to this one.
Who's next?
I got him.
Yep, Rotary event was fun, and DPW was even more fun last week, when they came around and took the stuff from in front of my house and all my neighbors, so everyone was so excited and thrilled about the event. I know some people aren't, but I think it's great.
I agree, and for once, Dave was not out of town and was here dragging stuff to the curb with me, so it was even better for me this time. Did you have anything else, Sheila?
Yeah, one thing was, I was getting ready to go to a meeting and four trucks drive up, and I just thought, I'm not stopping them, I just went like to my meeting, I waited until I got all the stuff to us. Because they had a different truck for different things around, so I'm like, good.
We will be altering the operation in the fall a little bit, so this will be a bit more, because we'll find it less labor intensive.
That'll be exciting too.
So I was not able to go to the Rotary Dinner, I was at the Clearview Elementary School Talent Show, and there's nothing quite like an elementary school talent show, I think, I think Manny would have approved of me attending that because he was always, he put his kids first every time, for sure, so. So there was that, I want to thank everybody for coming out to the volunteers appreciation, which seems like a really long time ago now, but it was a great event, our speaker was great, and I thank Cindy and everybody who put it together, and the gift, I keep getting feedback, the print of the depot, everybody loved it, so, good job, I really appreciate it. I also want to let you guys know that I think tomorrow, the clerk is going to be sending out on my behalf the proclamations that are coming up through, through August, not all of them are confirmed, but I wanted to go ahead and get that out to you guys so you can give us some feedback, and I'll get, I'll get a date for you guys to get back to me, probably a week or two down the road, so we'll get those scheduled, and Mr. Town Manager, you got anything for us?
As you all now know, the next roundtable is scheduled for the NRC, the NRC was very gracious, they kind of steered us into the dates because they, they, they were available when they thought we'd get most critical mass, they're supporting us with interpreters, they're supporting us, we're going to have to pay for childcare, if they're going to provide it, but we will pay for it, and so that's all laid on and ready to go, so that, like you should see the emails by now.
Does the City of Ithaca, New York, provides childcare at all of their city council meetings?
Please don't do that. I'll tell you what, I'll go, I'll go do the childcare and, and finally, I'm going to be off the rest of the week, I'm taking my daughter to some college visits, and then I'm going to meander my way down to Delaware so my wife and I can celebrate her anniversary, which was actually yesterday, but she was already down in Delaware, so I'll catch up to her. It's not like any successful couple, you celebrate your anniversary at a party, and plus I need to see my daughter, she took the dog, that's what.
At least you remembered it, we've had ones where we're like, wait a minute, that's right. How can you celebrate your anniversary without your dog?
I can't, I can't forget it because it's tax day.
That's so romantic.
That was deliberate.
Well, no, it's the only time the old chapel Fort Meyer was open, so we can only get around tax, so we had a window and we jumped on it. Yes, yes, it was a great place to be. That's all I had.
All right, well, anybody have anything that they follow in the meantime? All right, so we are going to have a closed session, I will ask for a motion to go into closed meeting under section 2.337, 11A1, Code of Virginia for Discussion of Perspective Candidates Relative to Appearance to Boards and Commissioners.
So moved.
Cindy? All of the affected say aye. And those opposed, that, we are going, we're going to take a brief recess.
The smaller ones.